So we have Karen is here with us tonight, Karen. Todd is here and I'm going to unmute him. Todd, if you could unmute yourself, there we go. Karen, could you swear, Todd, in he was appointed, but he is here tonight to be sworn in to the fire department, please?
Chief, that was firefighter and EMT?
Correct, he's a call firefighter EMT.
And I had already sent the paperwork over, I think John picked it up the other day. With the appointment card, et cetera. All right, Todd, you want to raise your right hand? Do you swear to uphold the position of on-call firefighter EMT for the town of Phillipston to the best of your ability? Say, I do.
Yes, I do.
Okay, you are hereby sworn onto the fire department and thank you very much for serving the town.
Thank you.
Congrats. Todd is a welcome addition and we'll be happy to have him aboard our department. He's a hard worker, great individual, I've known him from my time in Athol, so welcome aboard, Todd, thanks for being part of our department here in Phillipston.
Thank you, looking forward to it.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
I had a request from Mr. Chairman from the Conservation Commission to appoint Amanda Mahaney, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, to the Conservation Commission. In the absence of the other member, we will have to hold that aside for the moment. Mr. Chairman? John?
Yeah. No, yeah. I'm wondering if can is Gare still with us?
Nope, he's gone home.
Oh, I saw his name there.
Oh, he's pouting.
Well, we let's not fuel the fire. I'm just wondering if he's still there and would come in to do this.
Yeah. Here, let's see if he can unmute. Well, he's been asked to unmute, I don't see anything happening.
I see, they also want to sort out members' terms?
Yeah, we're going to have to check to see some of the members' terms, there were a couple of them filling in partial terms, so for the time being, this term will end June 30th until we can check. There were some other people, you know, Kim was in there filling a partial term, and so I wanted to make sure that we get this.
Is Kim still on the telecom?
She is, but I want to make sure, I don't want to, you know, say it's a three-year term and then find out later it's a two-year term, so for the moment, we're just putting it into the current fiscal year. There you go.
So I would entertain a motion to appoint Amanda Mahaney to the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
So, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Okay.
Linda Ellis has her hand up. Why am I at the end?
Because because picked up there are other accounts and it's being picked up.
Hello, I'm just, I was trying to tell you, Kevin, that I don't think it was being recorded right from the beginning of when you guys first logged in.
Yeah, it is now, though, yeah.
Yeah, and then also the internet over here, the Comcast truck has gone down the road, went down the road about a half an hour ago, so our internet over this way is going in and out, I lost you guys for a little bit, too.
Oh.
I think Gare lives up the road somewhere, but I'm not sure where.
Oh, well, okay.
I believe he's back now, yeah, he's here.
Just wanted to let you know, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, appointment of town treasurer. Last night, the interviewing committee met with some folks to interview some folks for the position of town treasurer. Do you wish to make a decision on that position now, or how would you like to proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I'm ready to make an appointment. I'm not sure if Gare is ready.
No, I mean, I've had, I had to work today, I couldn't look up references, and we haven't been forwarded any information regarding these people by Mr. Flynn, so I think until we get that and are able to look up the references and stuff, that we can make a decision then, but without all that, I don't see how we can make much of a decision.
Eric, that was all emailed to you.
I know, did you check your emails, because I had, I had a lot of information on everybody.
Just because you sent me something doesn't mean I can check it all. So I'm not, I don't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable yet, I want to talk to a few more people. The same with the accountant.
Next item was appointment of assistant tax collector. Sally sent, Hasberg sent a letter to Chairman Gerhardt and me requesting the board appoint Catalina as the assistant tax collector. Mr. Chairman, how would you like to proceed?
I, I don't believe we were ready to do that. I, I don't think that, I believe that the select board does the appointing authority.
Yeah.
And we have not appointed anyone.
Okay, so you'd like to hold on that as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. The elementary school options committee, two additional persons have come forward asking to be appointed, Richard Deegan and Tom Doust. I'm not sure about Richard, I think he may have children in the system, and if Richard is here, he can, he can, I'll ask him, Richard, could you unmute, please?
Yes, I did, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have children in the system? I can't remember.
I do, I have a daughter who's kindergarten, will be going to first grade next year.
Okay, and I know the Dous do, too, so the other person is Tom Dow, so Richard Deegan and Tom Dow have also come forward asking to be appointed to the school options committee, they have children in the system.
I would make him entertain a motion to appoint these additional members to that committee.
I'll second it.
So both have been seconded, and as far as discussion, I don't think it's that any individual that's interested, they don't necessarily have to have children in the system, I think we have people that could serve on that. They could offer their services without having kids in the system, I know it's a plus, but anyway, so without any further ado, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's see that guy.
Okay, thank you. FY22 budget, the accountant was able to complete the November and December expense reports, which I posted on the website. I had to post them on a separate page from the rest of the checkbook items, because there's so many, only so many we can post on one page, it's got several years, I'm going to have to find a way to split them up, I'll probably do it into separate years, you know, FY18, FY19, FY20, and so on. So when you go to the selectmen's page on the left-hand side, it says, there's a link there, I think it's a green, it says various things you can click on, one of them is open checkbook, but there's also on there FY21 expense reports. You can click on that, and that gives you the most recent set of expense reports through to December 31st. Since those reports are ready, I can put those numbers in for people to see the first six months of FY21, so we can show people, departments and boards, what they've spent for FY20, a full year, and then what they've spent for the first six months of FY21. So I'll be distributing the forms this week and the numbers for them this week. So they can start working on that. Also, Opal visited this afternoon, and she is planning on starting meetings for the capital improvement planning committee. I think the first meeting she mentioned was going to be February 11th, Thursday, February 11th. So departments can expect a visit from Opal shortly if she hasn't already been out to see them. So.
Planning on having a meeting February 11th?
Yes.
I suppose the members will be notified by mail. I haven't heard anything.
She hasn't sent the letter yet, she was looking to see what dates the, that she could schedule meetings, and she wants to stay on Thursdays, and knowing that the finance committee usually is on Thursdays, but I don't think they'll be meeting before February 25th, sounded like, anyway. That's when she was planning to start her meetings.
I may, may not just not have gotten the mail yet.
Yeah, the letter hasn't gone out, this was this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
But I've heard secondarily that she has been going around and is, at least has met with one department on her own, though, and that she's planning to meet with departments, you know, by herself first before they come to the committee.
Okay.
Rick Tenney wanted to talk to the board about wages. Rick, let me find you, just a sec.
I thought we had cleared up with him, I mean, he's welcome to speak.
I'm sorry, Rick, I must have gone by too fast, give me a sec.
I see him, under director, Tenney.
Oh, okay. Okay. If you would unmute. Okay. Yep, there you are, there we go.
Okay. The question that I had, it's kind of an across-the-board question. Couple of weeks ago, it was suggested that everyone or Kevin was going to look at putting in a substantial increase for the employees, because they hadn't had a raise the previous year, and, you know, the pandemic and working so hard, et cetera, et cetera. Last year, normally we get a two-and-a-half percent increase, and the average cost of living across the board, the country, for the past 10 years, has been about 2.58%, so we get just under the cost of living. Last year, we didn't get one because of the pandemic, and, you know, we're concerned with what the state budgets were going to come in at, and I remember selectwoman Kim Pratt had suggested that maybe once we see what the state numbers come in at, we could very well be sitting down, having a conversation in the fall, and give everybody the raise that they didn't get. I did bring it up back at the overtime meeting, and I believe selectman Telepsiak preferred to solve one problem at a time, and it was kind of put on the back burner. So every, every, myself, I was expecting that we were going to try to make up a little bit of ground, because besides budgets and pays, we've basically set still and actually kind of gone backwards. Our insurance co-pays went up 10%, the average raise across the board for most employees is approximately about 45 cents an hour, so you're looking at about $18 a week, and I think most of our insurances went up about 11%. Even though COVID came in, the cost of living didn't go idle, in fact, it's gone, it's gotten even worse, if any of you have gone and bought any merchandise at the hardware store, she'd apply with, went up to 45 or 50 bucks from, from 20, and food and groceries has gone up 30 bucks. And it was, it was spoken about a couple of weeks ago, that, you know, we work very hard, and we need to take care of our employees, so I'm really hoping that the selectmen and the FinCom can really look at this a little bit more, because the substantial number that I heard last week was three, three and a quarter, maybe three and three quarters, which is basically a percent and a half higher than what we would have normally gotten. And that, that unfortunately, in my opinion, is not a definition of substantial. I just, I just think that, you know, it's, it's money well-spent for our employees in town, there's not many of us, and I hope that you reconsider and take a good look at this, and take care of the town employees that did work hard for you last year, and did so much and worked through the pandemic. We didn't get any, you know, a lot of people you hear about getting special stipends in the private industry, and some of the people are on unemployment. 18-year-old kids were collecting more than I was making last summer, and that's neither here nor there, that's the government's fault, it's not your fault, but it would be nice to see us all get back on track to where we were, because we are kind of going backwards as employees.
Sure, and that's why I had said that we were going to get together with the finance committee and the department to look at special things, I know that Kevin had mentioned that he wanted to propose, well, I guess he did use the word substantial, I believe, like you said. But I don't, I don't think it was, there was an amount, maybe I missed that, but anyway.
Yeah, last, last week there was.
Oh, well, anyway, these are things that, you know, the select board and the finance committee with the department will work out, I believe.
Okay, and that's why I did not answer any specific questions, because it's not anyone in specific, it's mostly all the employees across the board.
Right.
And, and like I said, we, a lot of the departments, we turned over a lot of funds last year because of this, and as far as we know, the state, the budget was fine this year, it's going to be fine next year, and it might get cut two years down the road from now, but last year, we thought it was going to be last year and if not this year, so who knows what's going to happen moving forward? I just don't think that we can sit idle and wait for the other shoe to drop, and we're all going backwards, that's all.
Right, right, no, and you have a good point, that, you know, if you guys, you know, you're, you're, not you personally, but, you know, the, the people, the employees, if they were sliding back, then if we, if we can financially, we should at least make up and hopefully a little more if we can.
Okay.
All right, I believe that's our intent, and like I said, we'll be meeting with the finance committee and things will be finalized then.
Okay. All right, that's all I needed.
Thank you.
Open meeting law complaints, Mr. Chairman, the town council was trying to get responses to the open meeting law complaints prepared by this evening's meeting, but was not able to finish them in time, so we'll have to hold off for at least until next week. So this item, we're not ready to act tonight.
No, but you know, I think maybe Gare got, is he still here? Like, you know how Linda said there was a truck up by him? I don't see him on the list anymore.
Oh, wait a minute, he's got bumped out, wait a minute, he was in the meeting room.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. We don't have any trees coming down, do we?
I hope not, I got to get some sleep.
Okay. Gerhardt could, oops, you unmute yourself, please.
This computer just shut off on its own.
Oh, okay.
Linda said she thought there was a Comcast truck out by you. Anyway.
Okay. Um, this item, the next item is the elementary school. Earlier today, we received an email from Sue Varney, which also was sent on to Tom McEnany, and came to the office, and then I forwarded it on to you, both of you as well, just to make sure that you got it. That contains a copy of a letter that we're going to receive by certified mail from the school district, and that same draft school use agreement. And the letter, the substance of the letter is that the district is complaining that they haven't heard anything back from the, from the selectmen, and that they are, unless they hear within seven days, they are planning to return the school to the town's care, custody, and control February 12th, 2021, and they're proceeding with efforts to shut down their occupancy of the property with respect to insurance utilities and systems, and so on. Have you had a chance to read this, gentlemen, or?
I took a look at it.
I did, too.
Okay, so I guess the question is, how do you want to respond to this?
Well, first of all, it's not their school to close down, so they shouldn't be doing that, they're just leasing it, so they really, they really don't have anything to stand on there. Second of all, their letters, their first letter states, February 28th is the last day that we will have control of it, instead of, now they're changing it to February 12th, so they keep moving around, and until they get a solid of what, what they're actually doing, I think we should hold off on.
I believe this registered letter is their final answer, I guess, and, and we have not, I mean, I have responded to them that we are waiting for some more information, and, but, you know, that isn't really much, so and they're not.
Well, I've called out lawyers several times, and I don't think they've received a check, because they're not getting back to me at all, so I would like to know what's going on with that.
They cashed the check. They cashed it, January 13th, they cleared the bank.
I'd like to see the front and the back of that check. So that I can have something that I prove to them.
Let me ask Lynn to unmute.
Are they saying that they've never received payment?
Yes.
They're saying that they never received the payment?
That's what I got out of the last I talked to them, yes, so that's, that's why I just want the front and the back pictures of it, so I can prove to them, here it is, but that doesn't help us very much at all, right now.
What doesn't?
Well, this, this problem with, with them. I think we should just come up with something and, and then have to, we might have to run a buy Macanany or something, I don't know, and find out.
Well, I think at this point, we should be just working towards taking it over, you know, tell them, please do not winterize it, you know, we had funded at the last town meeting, in case they were going to pull out, then we would take over, so that, I believe we should proceed in that manner.
Right. So according to their first letter, it was February 28th, and the town would take a full effect on March 1st. And now they've changed it, so I think we should go back to the, we take over completely on March 1st.
Well, I mean, we can counter, I mean, that's why they said, you know, they would like to hear within seven days, because they really haven't been hearing from us at all. So we can, we can mention that.
Okay.
And if you're given a copy of the check, are you going to go back to these guys, or?
Yeah, fucking complain. And at least I have something to show them, right now I have nothing.
As far as you know, nothing, they haven't done anything, or?
Exactly.
So this response, we're going to give to them, saying, you know, your original one said the end of, basically the end of February, so it would be till March, and that's what we kind of negotiated, I don't know, back in November.
Right, right.
You want us to, I mean, Governor Page would certainly do that.
Well, I think they should just look at it and see if, if they, I think we can craft something that's very similar to the language that they have. Right, so it shouldn't be that hard to modify it a little bit.
I suppose, I mean, ultimately, we need to take it over.
Yeah, exactly.
So what, they're talking a week or so, that's what the change, the difference is?
February 12th to the 28th, so basically that's 16 days.
Yeah, well, we certainly can ask why there was that change, but.
No, I think we should go back to the end of the month, tell them, no, your original one was March 1st, we take it over, and until then, they, they can't shut it down, because it's not their building, so we should let them know that as well.
Right, I mean,
and people are using it.
They were going to winterize it, because they weren't hearing anything back from us, that's all. There's no need for them to winterize the building.
No, no, people are using it, so they can't just go ahead and winterize it, it's not their building to do that, all they can do is turn in their lease, and it'll be at the end of, they need to give us at least 30 days notice, and I think the end of February is where they can do it. You there?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just thinking, I mean, that, how we came up with that, they had notified us last March that they weren't going to have students in there, and so that was in agreement, was they needed to let us know six months to be answered.
Well, the first thing on the thing, on their thing, was that, that they could, would have complete use of the whole thing. The district shall have the exclusive right to the property, that's ridiculous, I mean.
I know, but what are they doing, they haven't used it, nor do they intend to.
Right, and that was on their school use agreement thing, right, so that's just plain idiotic, so why would we respond to that?
Well, I mean, that part, but the rest of it, it is time for us to take it over.
Right.
So we should make moves towards that, so we can craft a letter asking why there was a change in the date, from the 12th to the 28th. But in the meantime, I don't know, we can get, I'm sure that Lynn can get you a copy of that check, if you want to still pursue these guys, pursuing, you know, what they, I'm not sure what you were going to have them do for us.
Well, well, I was trying to get them to look at the agreement and come up with a letter, so that we can pretty much use that school as we need to, without having to worry about them saying, oh, no, well, you without having to worry about them saying, oh, no, well, you can't do this and you can't do that. That's education related. So you can't do this or do that when it's, when it's a school that they have given up completely.
Right. But I mean, we have been doing whatever we do want with it. We haven't been running.
We want to make sure that they can't turn around and say, well, start to dictate what we can and can't do there.
Right. I, I, I don't think they have any intention of doing that. But we do need to finalize it, that's all.
Right.
So if you can get in, I mean, we're going to have warrants after tonight, right?
I would imagine. But there's nothing in the, in the, in the.
Well, I'm saying when you go in to sign the warrant, you could get a copy of the canceled check.
Okay.
That'd be my thought.
Yeah.
Anybody else still with us? Kevin, you still there?
Yep, just listening.
Okay. So there'll be warrants for us tomorrow?
Yes, they're here now.
Oh, all right. So if we can somehow arrange for Gare to see the check?
I guess the question is to Lynn, can she get a copy of the check that quickly?
Yeah, I think I can pull it up and get it from the bank.
Okay.
Okay, great.
It's just a matter of me logging in and getting it.
Okay.
All right.
I know, I, I believe it cleared on, what was it, the 13th?
Yeah, I believe that's what you had said.
Yeah.
So we got a few hands up. I'm not sure who's went up first. We've got Tim Haley, Linda Ellison, Bernie Mallow.
Okay, just going from.
I'm sure they have something to say on that.
Bernie?
Fine.
Bernie, can you unmute?
Yeah, I'm going to try to be quick because I know Tim was up before me and Linda, but unless there's a thing about the school. If we're going to take the school back, what difference does it make if we take it back on the 12th or the end of the month? I would, I would think it would be in our best interest just to like, get it done. Yeah, just, just get it done. If that attorney hasn't cashed a check that, or even if they had, that Gerhard had sent them, I would ask for the money back if they haven't responded back to him. And you're going to spend a barrel of time writing letters, going back and forth or whatever. And if the objective is that we're going to get the school back, let's just get it done. I, I really don't see where a week and a half or two weeks is in the best interest of the town to spend all the time playing around with it. So that'd be my opinion.
No, I agree. Thank you. So who did, did he say Tim was back? He thought, I wasn't looking at the.
Okay, Tim?
Yeah, I, I have two questions here. One was back at the Assistant Tax Collector when John said that he, the Select Board was or wasn't the appointing authority. It was kind of muted and I didn't really.
We are the appointing authority.
Oh, okay. All right. I, I didn't hear what you, I thought you said you weren't, but okay, that's clear. All right. And then also the school, it seems to me that if you were to, like Bernie says, just take it over, but just call the school up or schedule a meeting with them and say, bring all the paperwork for signing over the electric, the internet, whatever, has to be transferred so that it can be transferred and schedule a workshop with them and say, what papers do we have to transfer and where do we sign?
And that way. That's what they've been looking for.
Yeah. And be civil about it and say, hey, you know, I mean, they haven't been civil to begin with about shutting their school down, but at least it's time and just call them up, say, hey, come on over, bring us the paperwork. Where do we sign? Let's get it done.
Well, I don't know. They've been uncivil in it. I mean, we may, we may disagree, but I don't think they've been.
Yeah. I mean, not uncivil, but they didn't have to close our school on us, but, but that's beside the point. But anyways, I mean, just call them up, say, hey, let's do this and.
Right. No, we need to, we need to. We were waiting to hear from these other people. It's kind of a law firm and I don't, I don't know. I think the time has gone by.
And also, if this Amanda is the same Amanda that we just appointed, I don't know whether she'd want to get sworn in tonight or.
Oh, we could do that.
Yeah, it's just a full term.
That's a good point, Tim. I'm glad you mentioned it because we did not, right?
Yep, you passed over that.
So I would entertain a motion to appoint Amanda Mahaney to the Conservation Commission.
We already seconded that. That was right when I came back on.
Oh, all right.
You did that.
So we did that, Tim. Oh, you wondered if you wanted to get sworn in by Karen? Tim's still here?
He's here.
Did he mute himself? Okay.
Yeah, yes, I accidentally unmuted myself. No, I didn't know if, where they sworn the firefighter, if that was, or whether she's just going to stop by.
We certainly could. I, because Karen's still here.
Yeah.
Okay, let's unmute Amanda and see if this is the same person we've been talking about. Amanda?
Hi.
Hi. Are you?
Yes.
Okay. That's undue. Karen, I'll unmute you. Okay.
There's Amanda. Hi.
Yep.
Do you want to raise your right hand? Do you swear to uphold the position of the Conservation Commission member of the town of Phillips in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts fairly, impartially, and the best of your ability?
Yes, I do.
You are hereby sworn and thank you so much for.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you both. But thank you, Amanda, for your interest.
Okay.
So Linda had her hand up. Is she still?
Okay, Lynn, do it unmute, please.
Thank you. Kevin, I was just going to request, can you please list where it says FY21? For the up-to-date open checkbook till December 31st, 2020? Could you please include the number FY20-21? That would be very helpful to, there's a lot of people been calling me saying, I can't find it. And I definitely had trouble finding it until.
Yeah, I'm going to have to shift those around. Yep.
Yeah. And then also, can you please forward me a copy of the paperwork from Rick Moulton that you received from the school about what the expenses were? Because remember John and Gare that the city was supposed to send you? How much exactly those things were costing us over there? So we'd have a clue. So we could budget. And also, I heard that there's been no custodian being sent over to that school. So with the snow on it, you know, what's happening? And if he's still supposed to be taking care of that school, that should be looked into whether or not he's keeping that roof cleared off and maintained. I mean, we don't want people slipping. They're using it over there. And also, is there power on to run those heaters on the roof? I don't, I don't know if there's anybody in our town like Rick, maybe Tenny or somebody that knows how to use those things because that could be a lot of money if something freezes up on us, right?
I don't believe, I don't believe anything's been shut down yet.
I don't know. I, I.
Well, yeah, no, we've had people using it.
Yeah. But I know there's a, there's been no custodian over there, also on that water company. Like before we take it over, there was some stuff that was supposed to be done that, that was in that report. And that was on their time, not our time. He should be made to pay for that. It wasn't a lot, but it should be done. Because that's what we paid for as a town, as a district.
Where does this, where is this list of things that needed to be done?
The report from that water company. Do you know, Kevin, who's the company that was doing it?
Whitewater?
It was Whitewater, but it doesn't. Oh, I thought you were talking about the DEP had some stipulations.
No.
Anyway.
They did. They had some stipulations too.
Well, then these should be incorporated in our response within the next seven days to the district.
Yeah. Like the big one is, is what Rick Moulton had sent Kevin. Kevin is going to forward to me. There's a listing of the breakdown supposedly, or an estimate, Kevin? Was that what he said, an estimate?
There was a, a list of what they spent the last, I want to say two and a half years or so.
But what about the, like, oil bill and gas?
No bills, just what they spent on oil and propane and electricity.
So can we request copies of the bills? Because we need to know what the actual amounts are.
It gives us, it gives us the amounts. They didn't give us the invoices. They just gave us the total for the month.
Okay. But didn't you tell me it was estimates?
No, it was what they spent.
It was what they spent. Okay.
And Linda, are you asking for the Finance Committee or the Elementary School Options Committee?
Finance Committee.
Okay.
Because if we're putting together budgets, you know, we got to kind of.
Well, we did. Yeah, we, going forward, we'll need to know. But also, we, we had approved certain monies to take these bills over right now.
Right. But they might be more monies. Notice, I noticed prices going up like Rick did too. I'm like, uh-oh.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, so John, who's going to, you're going to put together a letter, a response letter to the school committee?
I can help you with that, John.
How does that work? The, the two of us can't work on outside of the meeting, right? You want to put down your, your thoughts and what you think should be included? And we can, you can send that to Kevin and I can send my thoughts to Kevin and then I can put stuff together?
We can find, yeah, we can figure out how to do that.
Because I don't, I really, I don't want to get hit with another open meeting law if you're sending me stuff. You know what I mean? I don't.
Well, yeah, but we're not voting on anything. If I just send you what I think, then you can incorporate that or whatever.
I think we'd be better off if we use Kevin as the middleman. Just for the transferring of, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't, I don't care if I get another open meeting. I mean, I can't, I don't understand how, you know, like you're right about a vote, but I, but these requirements go beyond just us making a vote.
Yeah, we, we need to put together a letter.
Right. So well, I mean, you want, I just think we'd be safer if you send what you want it to say to Kevin and I will get that from him and then we'll, I'll put the, get, put together the letter. Unless you want to do it. But I'll, I'll take care of it as the chair. So just put your ideas down and send them through him. I think that's the simplest way.
All right.
I believe that's all we had for tonight.
That's it.
So.
Why, why don't we wait until next week? We'll have a meeting next week and then we'll discuss this and put it together then.
Well, they said that they're going to start moving if we didn't respond in seven days. I'm not sure. Well, we haven't really got the letter yet.
Right.
But well, I, I don't want to wait till next week to start.
No, no, I'll, I'll have something together.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
So with nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I don't see any more hands. So I would call this meeting. Don't you, I.
Fan dry eye.
Thank you all for coming.
Good night.